Good evening, everyone. Welcome to a special meeting of the City Council and City of Pierceville to be held Thursday, June 28th. The time is 6:03. May I have a roll call, please?
Mary Ann.
President.
Juliana.
Here.
Richard.
Here.
Sonia.
There we go.
Here.
Robert.
Here.
Ben.
Here.
Galen.
Here.
We have a form, so let us stand for our invocation, as well as our pledge of allegiance.
Dear Heavenly Father, Lord God, we thank you for this day, we thank you for your love and your grace. Lord God, we just pray for these hurting in the country with this issue today, we pray for healing there, Lord God, we just pray you to reveal us. Father God, guide us in the things that we do here, watch over our city employees and our staff members, Father, may you help us to continue to lift this city up. Father, we continue to pray for our kids in high school starting next fall. Father, forgive us who we've thrown in for it since Jesus Christ was sent down, pray.
Amen.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item four, new business, a discussion of possible action regarding employees' compensation plan. We need to entertain a motion to discuss, please.
Motion to discuss.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thomas Barber, discussion made.
Okay, so the last meeting, we went over the existing budgets and where we were at within the existing budget. The other thing that you guys had asked for was to get an early look at the preliminary budget for next year. Now, I want everybody to understand when we started to do this, the first iteration of that preliminary budget for next year normally takes us about six weeks to put it together, we did it about six days, because that was a request that you had to consider and decide on. So we've thrown it together real quick, but I want to point out some things as we start to talk about this. When we give the budget memo to the directors at the start of every year, we ask them to review their line items, just like what we showed you last time. If they think they're going to get a little bit short in one, then they can put an increase in there. If they've got one that they're long in, we ask them to look at moving, so if it looks like they're going to have a thousand dollars left over in something this year, maybe $500 more dollars on another item for next year, or we've already made a small line amount of transfers we talked about last time, that they've made those adjustments in there. That preliminary draft also includes additional stuff that they requested, minus additional staff, we're not including any additional staff. So if they said they needed some additional cost for fuel, because fuel's gone up since we started last year, that's been included. Any increases in utility bills, like that's something we monitor, so it looks like the utility bills are going to be higher. We added new buildings, obviously the utility bills are going to be higher, so we add those kind of things into this as well. So I want to, we're going to go over the first page of the draft, we've got, the handout that you've got there kind of has pretty much everything for the general fund, but I want to start on this first page, and I'll point out a few things. So, this is that summary sheet that we looked at last time on the current budget, minus some percentages, of course, because we're not into this, this is just a preliminary draft, it's out of the proposed draft budget. So, we have put in some numbers for taxes, and so back in your second page, I think it is, it breaks down all the different taxes that we take in. We projected taxes for the year, if you look up there, it's about $446,000. One thing I definitely want to make sure that we note on this is that we have added into that projection, have the ORP taxes for the first annexation, there's been nothing added in for a second one, because that's not been completed yet, and so we can't put it in until it's been completed. So that $700,000, something thousand dollars that we know we're going to get there has not been included in this, so that's been left out. The second thing, I'm going to pull that sheet up real quick, so your second sheet is where it starts to break down. So this is your taxes in the top row. If you'll notice, so if you look at the ORP taxes, it actually shows a slight increase, that's not increased, it's based on the fact that we added some properties from the first annexation, does include the second. Delinquent taxes, we left it at the same as what we normally do, because that kind of averages out. But if you notice, you know, this year our actual's $117,000, we've only projected 40, the year before was 44, so that kind of comes and goes, we can't shoot high on that, you need to shoot low on that, and we just hope you end up getting some better than that happened, and then you can do something. Penalty and interest, we keep it about the same, and we met that already this year. The next thing I want to talk about, though, is the city sales tax down here. So we projected this year about $1.24, or $2.124 million. Originally, we projected just a little over $2 million. During the course of the year, we've added to that projection and made budget adjustments, the streets, we bring some of the other stuff we did, because we were ahead on property tender on sales tax, that's what we talked about the other night, it's better to project it low, and then as you go through the year, you know that you're going to have the extra, then look at what another need is, and add it in at that time, than to do like what happened in the first year, it was projected 3.5 and we brought it to, we don't want to ever get in that situation again. So if you notice, we projected $2.124 million for this year, we only have $2.25 in there, because we want to gather some more data from businesses in the first annexation, and it doesn't include any businesses from the second annexation. So we want to gather a little bit more data before we actually try to look at a 10-year average on some of those businesses and what they pay, or at least what their sales are, and kind of try to get that narrow down, where we can keep it conservative number, but not overshoot it, but not way undershoot it either. This is way undershot, we know it's going to be significantly more than that, because of the businesses, one of these alone is enough to make up that plus four. For the purposes of doing this draft, so we can get a real look at the numbers, at worst, absolute worst case scenario, we left that number very low, and left that $700,000, $700,000, $700,000 from the second annexation out. And then our mixed beverage tax down there at the bottom, that thing is, I don't know how, we still can't figure out when they actually collect that, although we give it a very low number, so we don't really worry about it too awful much, because it's not one that's going to make us or break us in the budget process. So going back up to the top page, the very first page on your document, so that $4.468 million, that's our case, and those are the different taxes that we look at, that we do have. And there's a number of other revenue sources that we have, franchise fees, that $340,000 figure, we budgeted 315 this year, we're going to be over that. We got extremely conservative, because it was dropping off every year, and so we dropped back on that this last year, because we didn't want to have another shortage. We actually, the year before, I should hear, we were significantly shorter than that. Now, it's kind of stabilized. We didn't include in the projection for franchise fees any increases that we're going to get from the first annexation, and there will be an increase because of the first annexation, because they're using now city right-of-ways instead of county right-of-ways, so that money will come to us instead of the county. It's not a significant amount, but it will increase that number. Files of forfeitures, we looked up a little bit based on the numbers from this year. Rentals, that number on the rentals isn't the rentals from the civic center, that's rentals from other stuff, so we keep it pretty low, if you could actually create, if you don't, we don't want it to be a problem. Interest, we keep that about the same, so far, actual this year on the interest is about $2,100, and we projected a little bit low as a little bit of a cushion. Miscellaneous, that miscellaneous, historically, if you look at 2016, 2017, it's about $134,000. This last year, $1.2 million, why? Because of the TNL insurance claim. This year, it's projected at about $52,450, that goes back to about our historical average on those miscellaneous revenues as well. So that gives us a total, to look at this worst-case scenario, total revenues of a little over $5 million. So that would be where that would start. So when we start looking at expenditures, now again, I want to point out that these expenditures include, the expenditures listed on here include adding in everything minus employees that the departments ask for. It includes a renovation off of a city park again, about $70,000, I think, like we had last year, we made it up, having had the book. It includes increases for, a bunch of other things, it includes increases for our street lighting program, because that cost is more now, there's some increases in there. And then as we go through each one of the departments, we've had to kind of shift some things around to try to make our accounting processes easier, too. So we'll talk about why some of the budgets have changed, the department budgets have changed in this as well. So, on the administration side, the total budget for this year, because of the insurance claim, was $1.8 million, because that money went into the administration budget, because that's where the line item was at. Next year, it stays very close to that, because the insurance is still going to be there, and we haven't spent, we haven't had insurance money yet, so it stays about the same. We actually dropped some stuff out of the administration budget, and we moved all of the expenditure for the city attorney into administration. We had the city attorneys scattered around the four different departments. I'm sure, whatever time they did that, there was a reason they felt they wanted to do that, but we have part of the budget for the city attorney in administration, part under the city council, part under the municipal court, and part under the climate department. And so, now when the girls go to pay the attorney's bill, there's four different line items, and they got to pull out of four different line items to pay that bill, and it just covers some that it adds extra work. So things like that, like our internet phone, stuff like that, that was scattered around the departments, we actually combined that and put that in the finance department. TNL insurance was scattered across multiple different departments, we combined that and put it in one department. We have pre-employed drug screens scattered around each department. I'm assuming the reason they did that, they did that, because it was a way to track to see which departments were willing to do most employees, because if you use that money, you're obviously having to hire new employees. But we have an HR department, it's easy to figure out without having to, so. If you have a department that historically hasn't had much turnover, and they don't have very much money in the line item, and all of a sudden they have some turnover for some reason, now, you know, one or two contests, or one or two pre-employed physicals, and they're out, and now we've got a problem, because now we've got to do a line item transfer in their budget to cover it, and so it messes up your track. So just putting them all in one place in HR makes it a lot easier. And then HR tells us, okay, we hired three parks employees this year, we had three parks employees quit, a couple of them we hired new ones, we had five of the public works quit, and we hired new ones, and it's easier just to do it that way. The administration, on your form there, it says administrative department, because we're operating a current budget out of the software right now, and this is a draft for the next year, that title will be changed to the Main Street program, but we can't change it right now, because it messes up everything in there, so we have to wait until we actually approve the budget to change that title. But that, the second line item, is Main Street. Of course, this year, we changed the position, we moved it, we did, we had to do some budget adjustments and transfers to get all that working. This covers the salary for the employee, it covers the operation costs, supplies, required travel, whatever else is in that budget. So that's not really the administrative department, since that department, we did away with last year, we said we had administration and administrative department, if you guys remember, we combined them into one, because they were same name. That was a vacant place where we could put Main Street, so that, that second line is actually the Main Street program. A couple of others that you'll notice some differences in, let's see which ones, what's in here? The tax department, was it not tax? Oh, the streets department, there was $975,000 budgeted in that last year, 757 this year, so it looks like we cut it by $200,000. We didn't cut it by $200,000. We had the street sweeper, we did a budget adjustment to buy the street sweeper, and so that raised the budget up by $224,000 for this year. So really, it's about the same budget, but we're not buying the street sweeper again, we didn't have to change the budget to buy the street sweeper. So mostly these places where you see significant changes, because we did something during the course of the year, like buying the street sweeper, or we moved the attorney, excuse me, municipal court, it looks like the municipal court went down quite a bit, that's because $35,000 of the money for the city attorney was in their budget, so they got combined in the other one, that came off in there, so their budget's pretty much about the same, but it doesn't have that line item in it anymore, so it makes the tracking of paying the city attorney easier. So, bottom line, when you get down to the bottom, if we bought, if we just blanket-approved everything, that the departments that ask for, that the total expenditure budget would be $6.44 million. Okay, so then you look up top, we're at $5.03, so obviously there's a difference in $1.03 million. Now, of course, up top, that doesn't include what could happen with the second annexation or any of that. There is no transfer budget at this time, for the first time ever. So this doesn't include any transfer from the utility department into the general fund. This draft budget doesn't include anything that would happen with the second annexation, and it doesn't include our preliminary review, where we're actually going down and paring down everything. Which last year, that preliminary review, when we started pairing down the budget, I think the first round, we cut $700,000 or something thousand dollars off of it. So I don't know who did it, because, again, a six-week process, a six-week process, it takes you a week and one day, you know, to get some preliminary numbers for you guys. So if you have questions, we'd be happy to try to answer your questions.
For the record, Councilwoman Sonia, her name is 618 arrival. Questions?
No. Yeah, I raised my hand, because I wasn't keeping up. Well, just, I mean, I'm looking at the negative 1.4.
Yeah, we started out with about negative 1.7 last year, and then, again, you guys are going to make a decision on the second annexation, that's not included in here.
Right.
There is a big difference, there's no transfer included here, that was $350,000 last year. None of that's included, the annexation of 300, and the transfer, that's $1 million already. So, I mean, this is, like I said, this is absolute worst-case scenario, if we just gave the departments everything they ask for, and projected our revenues low on everything that we're working, that we get revenues from, that would be the worst-case scenario. This draft is significantly better than the first draft we got last year, before we started pairing down and fixing stuff, doing whatever. And we paired that down and cut 1. whatever million dollars out of it, and then you guys asked us to cut $700,000 more out of it, we cut $700,000 more. So we actually, we cut more than 1.4 out, and there's quite possibly not 1.4 that have to be cut out of this, worst-case scenario.
We're looking?
Yes.
We're looking at salaries for the new budget, is that correct? Is that what you presented?
Well, what I recommended last time was that we implement it July 1st, because we do have enough money to do it this year as well.
But it's not in our current budget?
There's extra revenue in our current budget.
If it didn't say that with any extra revenue, we're going to start hiring some decisions by that were absolutely necessary, like in streets and some of those areas?
Yeah, we've got something else we've got as well, we did this pair down, there'd be room to do that.
Yeah, but we always get...
If the two annexations get, if the second annexation gets approved, there's over a million dollars in new revenue, over a million dollars in new revenue. The second component of that is, we have two parts to that add the ORP taxes, we have the MNO, and we have INS. And we already have new lands under INS, because of the first annexation. So the INS rate, INS has gone down, it's already gone down, because we have different land that gets applied, because our debt hasn't changed. So that amount that we have to pay for with our INS charge every year, has now got scattered over more property, all the properties in the first annexation, now that goes to them as well. So your tax rate's already gone down. That's inherent in the annexation, that's the reason we talked about the annexation from the start, was because it inherently makes the property taxes go down.
Go down.
So we're looking at that, property taxes going down?
Yeah, because your INS rate's going to go down.
Okay, what amount did we lose in taxable value, according to the draft?
$265 million compared to $295 million for last year, first annexation made up the difference in that amount. So we're probably going to put first annexation, if what the appraisal district gave us for a draft, for an estimated tax value is correct, which it never is, but if it was correct, then the taxable value would be added in, but the first annexation makes it up. So it's still be at the same, basically the same taxable value we had last year, but it's scattered over more, scattered over more. And that doesn't include anything that would happen in the second annexation, if you guys
So then...
One, let's go on to the next question.
Okay, the annexation's already included here on the tax base, correct?
The first one.
The first one, the first phase, first.
Yes, correct.
So, if we're already, if we're already at the negative 1.4, worst-case scenario, and last year we were at 1.7, and we had to restructure departments and do what we have to do, we have to eliminate some employment, so I don't understand how we can even afford paying raises. It's, we're, I mean, you know, I understand about phase two, but those are based on assumptions as well, is that not correct?
No.
Well...
If you vote yes, assume that you voted in.
The property values, it's not really an assumption on the ORP taxes, we know what those properties are worth, because the cat tells us. The big difference, though, is that we were at that, we were at that stage last year, and the reason we ended up having to cut employees and cut everything else was because that was after, we'd already pared down the budget, we'd already cut out all the extra stuff, minus the park renovation, we had left that in. We had left, we had specifically left that in, because we didn't want to, we wanted to make, we wanted to let everyone know that one of the things we were trying to find out to do was our park renovation. So we had left, we left that in, so you guys could try to consider that, that of course we had the conversations that we had during the tax hearings, and we decided to cut more during the tax hearings, was what we did, so we actually decided to bring the tax rate down to a different level than what was proposed. This, that budget last year was based on a proposed tax rate that wasn't the current tax rate, it was based on elevated tax rate. This was based on a proposed tax rate that's the same tax rate as what we have right now, so there's no increase in it. That's the other thing, there was more revenues than that last year, because of the proposed tax rate. So every time the council wanted to bring the tax rate down, then it created another gap over there on the expenditures, because that money wasn't there. So that's why we had to keep jockeying around, and at the end, when we cut the tax rate back to what we cut it to, that's why we had to reorganize the departments and cut the positions, because they cut no money out of what we put into that first, after we'd already pared it down, we still cut more money out of what we already pared down.
So we did that, we cut the budget on some of these departments, correct? So, that we eliminated some types of services, did we not?
Oh, we eliminated, we eliminated.
We eliminated services. So if we do have an excess, why not increase the services that we lost last term?
That's a legitimate thing, and my question to you would be, are we going to bring them at $10 an hour, so they stay six months and leave and go someplace else? Because they won't stay, because we don't have a compensation plan in place that competes with anybody. That, I mean, that's the point, that's been the point all the time. So we get a compensation plan that is competitive, and we're not even trying to be 100% competitive, we're trying to be 80% competitive.
So, what I'm saying, why not let this hire a resource management team to come in here to get us a more comprehensive pay schedule, as far as like the entry level, you know, and take into account certifications and whatnot?
The survey that I used to do this was paid for by all those towns that do it, and they paid hundreds of thousands of dollars to do it. We have $60,000 in our budget every year for professional services, I provide those professional services that have never been provided in the city before, I save that $60,000 every year, because I sit down and I do the salary reviews and use the data that people already paid for to do it, all right? Or we sit down and we look at rate studies that people have already done, so we're not paying people to just take a rate study from a city down the road and put our name on it and change the numbers and give it back to us. $60,000 a year, the city paid for that every year, we haven't spent a penny on that since I've been here. If you want, if you really think that we can bring somebody in, and they can do a better assessment of this than I can, it's going to cost you $50,000 or $60,000, but they're going to come and say, "Angela," because they're going to use, they take the tools of what everyone's already done, they put it together, and they use it to do yours. That's the way those things operate, that's why I hate doing it, because it's a waste of taxpayers' money. But if that's what you guys want to do, if you think, if you think that we can bring somebody else in from the outside, and they can look at it, and they're going to come up with a different figure, we can try.
To be quite honest with you, I think we need a comprehensive pay schedule, that's actually what we need, we need something comprehensive, that we know entry level is X amount of dollars, and for each year of service, it increases X amount of dollars, you know, and for certifications and so on and so forth, because I, to this day, I haven't seen any comprehensive pay schedule.
That's what this is. We've never had one, that's the whole point of trying to do this. You can't determine what an employee that's been here five years for, and so you determine what you should be hiring.
So you're telling me that this is a comprehensive, that this is not...
No, this is the first step. This is the first step, you have to set a baseline before you can do that, that's what we talked about last time. If you don't know what the baseline is, it doesn't matter which. If you're going to have employees that were brought in five years ago, when one council was here, and they were started at a certain level, and they were a friend of a council member, and you're going to have a person that was brought in when I was here, that was started at the right level, because that's where it should have started, and you start looking at, well, we're five years or 10 years, they should get paid this much more, all you're going to do is compound the problem, because the ones that were brought in under the wrong pay scale, they're just going to get more money, because they were a friend of somebody when they got hired. And the ones that were brought in and started at the bottom, because we didn't have any money, and that's what we had to do, they're never going to get caught up, and that's exactly what we look at. When we can look at any surrounding city around us, and we can see that we have positions that make 110% of what their positions make there, and we have other positions that make 52% of what theirs make, there's a problem, and you've got to correct that problem, before you can even sit there and start to look at that. I can't sit here and tell an employee, okay, I'm just going to take you, if you're making too much money, I'm just going to take it away from you. You were hired at the wrong rate, because whatever reason, so I'm taking it away from you, because that's an involuntary motion, they're going to turn around and sue us, and then we're going to be defending all the lawsuits. So all this is about is establishing a baseline, where from this point forward, we do things right in this community, instead of doing a baseline, whoever's sitting up there, and whoever their friend is that's sitting out here at this table, and whoever's friends get hired. That's what this whole thing is about, is establishing a baseline. Once you get the baseline, then, okay, what do we do for people that have been here five years? What do we do for people that have been here 10 years? What do we do? Then we look at everybody around us, what do they do for theirs, too? Same kind of comparison, those comparisons exist already, too. But we can't, it would do no good to sit here and talk about doing something for everybody that's been here 10 years, when you have that disparity in how they were hired, and it wasn't based, nothing was based on the requirements of the job, the duties of the job, the qualifications, or anything else. At the bank, you hired at the bank as a teller, you have certain qualifications you have to meet, right? And if you don't pay, if you pay $2 an hour less than the teller across the street, are you going to get the good tellers? No, you're not going to get the good tellers. If Walmart's paying $7 an hour, and HGV's paying $10 an hour for a person to do a slot for, where's everybody going to apply? They're going to apply to HGV, and they're not going to apply to Walmart. But it's not that difficult to sit there and figure out, if we're paying $10 an hour for a position, and the neighboring communities right down the road are paying $15 an hour for that position, they're not going to want to work for us while they live here, no. And the good employees are going to go down there, because they want, they're going to get the better employees, because they make them.
That one, that's it, yes.
I think probably what might help is, I haven't seen these salary surveys, but I've seen salary surveys in my profession, so some are quite good, and some, you know, could maybe not, but what might help is, these numbers were derived from that salary survey?
They're derived from the salary survey that every community around us, our size, uses.
So why don't, why don't we get a copy of that, Ron, you can read that, I would think that...
I don't think, it's big.
Yeah, I mean, if there's any question, I mean, I'm comfortable that these numbers are up on there, and I understand what it takes to develop that by those who make it. So, for a comprehensive baseline, I think that would be a good thing that you could read, and either feel comfortable or not comfortable, that these are good numbers to establish.
I've read that the comparison analysis from the city of Burney, so I know exactly what you're talking about, and on there it was comprehensive, you know, why, where they're at, and so on and so forth, you know, and all I'm saying is, why can't, I mean, I understand it costs money, but, you know, I mean, I want to make sure, I mean, being stewards of the resources of the city of Pierceville, I mean, I think we deserve to do that, to do an analysis.
Absolutely, absolutely, I'd be happy to give to you, it not only includes a comparison of the salaries, it includes the job descriptions, it includes everything else. My assumption of doing this was, I'm trained to do this, and so I figured you guys would be comfortable with the fact that I went to school to learn how to do all this stuff, I've done it for states, I've done it for counties, and now I'm going to do it for smaller communities, so you'd be comfortable with that. If you feel that you're, that you have a qualification that makes you comfortable, look, and I'll be happy to give to you, I mean, it's a usual document, you guys want to look at it.
I'm going to cut this short, Josh went back, we want to hear from the employees, and then we'll get back to you guys. If any one of you guys have anything to say on your behalf of...
I do. I'm Clint Ross, as you guys know me, I work out in the field, I'm awestruck, like Tinkin said, that, I mean, he's cut positions because he had to, and we, I think, we've done more with less than what we had. I mean, right now, we're running America on one leg. I mean, you're asking us to do all this work, and we're getting it done. I mean, we're doing it for the community, we're doing it for you guys, show us something, and we'll give it right back. I mean, that's, I mean, we'll fight for you if you fight for us. I mean, I think that's why we're all here. I mean, ain't that why we're all here?
Yes.
I mean, that's the way I see it. I mean, that's why we elect you guys here, you know, to fight for us. You know, you got any questions, ask me. I'm right here.
Any other employee?
I agree with Clint. We work hard, we devote ourselves to do a great job for the city of Pierceville. And, I mean, some of these guys that work in the heat and work long hours, and some of them only make $10 an hour, and they have families to provide, that just doesn't make sense. I mean, everywhere else you go, they get paid higher. And if we want our employees to stay and actually retire in the city of Pierceville, then we've got to give them something to stick around. If not, we're going to be losing them, hiring, losing, hiring, because they're getting better paid somewhere else. And I don't live here in Pierceville. I live in Irvine, but I work here. So, I mean, and I love my job. I really do love my job. But it would help if we got compensated for what we do. Three years already that we've been compensated for nothing, but we stick around. I mean, come on, guys, we all like to, we've got to survive.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other employees? Mr. Prost?
On behalf of the employees that work outside in the sun, is for what I stand up here, we see, and basically agree with what is being said here. Granted that the services, and I can understand as being politicians that you want to try to please those that voted you in, and that's all fine and damn. Yet at the same time, what's happening here is that the city of Pierceville, along with its employees, is being rebuilt, has to be torn down. There's a time to tear down, there's a time to build up. And right now, we're in a process of rebuilding and building up the city of Pierceville, the community, the employees, the every aspect of the city of Pierceville just about. Now, you guys made difficult decisions, those that were here last year and all that. I know it wasn't easy. I know you got criticism. I see that everywhere. I may not answer them on Pierceville topics, and I may not answer them here and there, but I know what you guys did, and it was awesome. It was like admirable because every council member sat up there and that sat up there, made their own decisions based on what they hear and what they see here, not by what is being said out there. And so at this moment, as we are rebuilding, I understand that it hurts, and then you guys are, you know, lean in a position that you want votes and want people to like you and all that. Yes, I understand that. I know where you're coming from. Sometimes, you know, you can't please everybody, and sometimes not everybody likes you, especially when you stand up for what's right, especially when you stand up for people that are trying to stay up, you know, keep up with the job, and they do get it out there from other citizens. And you're just here, and you're just there, and you're riding around and all this. You're not the only ones that hear it. They hear it too. And yet, because they are representatives of the city of Pierceville, they choose the right to shut up and take it, you know, because they know that there are potholes here, potholes there. My own street there on South Pecan there towards 1581, 82, I'm sorry, it's starting to look like another street that got fixed in not long ago. But listen, I'm not here for that. I'm just saying that I understand that you guys want to, you know, look into this, look into that. I think that we have, you have the information in front of you. I just ask that you really look into it, really look at what's being presented to you, and to make a decision on your own based on that, from your heart, you know, what is good and what weighs what, and that, you know, that our employees will be able to say, you know what, you know, we're working hard, we know we're doing this, but, you know, we're going to make an effort for them as well. As to whether or not my name's up there, as to whether or not I'm due for an increase in salary, it's neither here nor there because what, believe it or not, not being a politician and not trying to look good, it's those guys. Those guys do their job out there and trying to, you know, trying to please not only the city manager, not only the supervisor, the city manager, but the council as well, and that, that's quite a burden. So, council members, we appreciate what you do, and I know that what we ask to do is not easy, but we are grateful. It's just that right now, it's a situation that's very touchy, that's very delicate, and we pray that God will just give you wisdom, do what's right, and then stand up along the armory of God.
Thank you, sir.
Be ready. Thank you.
Yes, we do.
I wouldn't take much time. Since we're all in, you know, unison, you know, I thought, all I wanted to say is, I have, first of all, I want to thank everybody once again for allowing me the opportunity to, you know, work here, you know, but, and I know how I got in here. But I just came from a session at Pleasant and Eagle Ford Meeting, and they were talking about workforce in small communities, which applies to what we're talking about here. I'm supposed to get jobs in Pierceville. I would not feel good getting any job that doesn't amount to a fair wage to the citizens here. But they always say charity begins at home. So I would like us to look towards that phrase, charity begins at home, so that if the leadership here will give a fair, we're not saying we should run down the cost of the council, we should give a fair wage to our employees. It gives me strength. When I'm bringing the business, I would like to know that the business is going to pay them a fair wage because we pay our own staff a fair wage as well. It's all about fairness, and I think that's what the city managers are talking about, something fair, you know. That's all I want to say, you know, for us to look towards that.
We have, just a second. I think the employees that are here now is, were here when I came in at 2015. So they're very dedicated, I think you guys, y'all, when you guys were here. And it's about us making a decision to invest back into the employees. We have percentages in front of us. Tonight, decisions should be based on, not if we're not going to give a raise, but on what percentage we're going to give a raise, because it's due justice, just like he said, charity begins at home. And we have to take care of the city employees. So that's my skill.
As a Christian, we should give a living wage to our employees. I totally agree, totally agree. I saw the figures. The most, to be quite honest with you, where the most increase is at is the supervisory positions, not the people that really are out in the sun and what have you. I think that's what I'm concerned about, is that supervisory positions are getting a whole lot more than the people that are actually out in the fields, out in the trenches, out in the sun. That's the people that I care about. I care about those people because I can associate with you. I've been there, you know. I got educated, but, you know, I was lucky that I got a good job now, that, you know, but I feel for you because I've been, I've worked in the fields, I've done this, I've done that. And that's one of the people that I feel for because even if I, we give you the, you know, the majority of the money is going to supervisory positions. I would agree for a pay raise, but not for supervisory positions. That's...
Yes.
First of all, I'd like to say to all the employees, I am for a raise, but I think the timing of this right now during this fiscal budget year is not right. It looks like the numbers look very good for the upcoming fiscal year for all of us to get a raise, and perhaps if we got on the salary schedule where the bottom salaries were up to where they're very competitive, because I think that's where we're losing people, is people out in the field. We have a turnover out in the field, and we do need to have those salaries come up because we've got to take care of them. Now, I know that Officer Salinas mentioned a couple of meetings ago that he had lost an officer to the district because of salary, or somebody mentioned it because of salary, or the salary was better there than here. I'm worried about that. And entry level at the Pierceville ISD is $35,200 plus $300 for medical insurance, and then everything else comes off of that. That's not take-home pay. We provide benefits here at the city, a lot more than at the school. And the starting salary for a police officer here is $39,790. Okay, so we are competitive with the school in that sense, okay? The school district, because I worked in the school district 35, 34 years, you get paid salary, and then everything comes off of that. You don't get anything, any benefits. The only thing you get is $200 or $300 towards your insurance, medical insurance. Usually out of pocket, we have to pay a lot more, have to pay TRS, have to pay everything else out of pocket. And it all comes off the top. So a person who makes $42,000 in the school district is taking less home than someone who makes $42,000 at the county or at the city. And that needs to be understood because we do have benefits that add on to the salaries that are here, okay? And I'm all for a salary raise. I just think we need to, in my opinion, we need to see how the numbers end up so that we can look at this comprehensively and maybe bring everybody along the way they should be, and especially the people who deserve a bigger raise because they haven't had a raise or their salary's down towards the bottom and they're not going to... I mean, they can make $15 an hour anywhere versus $10 here, and that's what we're going to look at. But it would, in my opinion, improve all our personnel. I'm not against a raise, I'll tell you that. It would help all of us, all of you, to be at a more equitable pay scale. This is the same thing that I argued with our last interim city manager the last time you got, that you all got a raise, some of you got a raise, that some people got exorbitant amount of money and other people didn't get hardly anything. It has to be equitable. Equitable means everybody goes home, they have to provide for their family, they have to pay bills, everybody does. So somehow, we've got to make sure that everybody gets their fair share because everybody's working. Everybody works. And those that are out in the field work a little harder and under worse conditions, and it's understood. And that's my only concern, is if the timing of this is not, this is not the right time right now before we end our fiscal year, we can certainly plan to do something nice and big for our employees as the numbers look, with the proposed annexation and everything that we think is going to come in. The other issue I have is that we budgeted last September, we were running around trying to figure out how we're going to budget for this year. Had to cut employees, had to run to the county and ask for student help there and so forth. A lot of positions were cut. Some of you had to combine with departments, and you had more work and so forth. But we were able to get a budget going for this fiscal year. Now, we trust that in that budget, everything that was asked for was to pay the employees, to buy materials, to get things done, okay? I don't see how right now we can have any surplus money in that budget that was asked for.
Because employees that work hard the same way, you know, that's kind of, that's what I push. I'll push them to spend everything. I'll push them to work as effectively and cost-saving as they can because at the end of the day, if we're spending every, governments everywhere at the end of the day, that spend every penny at the end of the day, there's a lot of spending there that doesn't need to be there. So we don't approve every expenditure that goes across our desk.
But I, I mean, if there is money left over, that's great, but we can put that money, in my opinion, to put that money back into those potholes that need help, back into other things.
You're going to put them into the pothole?
For this fiscal year, for this fiscal year, for next fiscal year, if we are above and we have the money, which we should, then we can align all the salaries as best as we can, and helping those that need the most help with those salaries.
Mr. Herman, I mean, but you need, you need the guys to work to patch the potholes. I mean, if you're not going to give us, I mean, he, Tank is trying to give a baseline, let's start somewhere. I mean, you're saying it doesn't look good, the fiscal year, but we wait year after year after year. I mean, we've got to start somewhere. I mean, it has to start somewhere. I mean, they want us to do all this work and we're doing it, I mean, pay us? I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't understand. I don't, I really don't.
Well, you are getting paid right now because we do have an approved budget to pay our employees for this fiscal year. And the contention with this council and our city manager was, we've cut a lot of positions, and any money we have left over that comes in, we need to start looking at hiring more and help because y'all do need help on the streets. We need help everywhere. We need another, we ended up with one person at the police department to take care of all the issues out there with dogs and this and that. We were supposed to have two. You know, we, those are the things that we need to look at because if we got money coming, then let's get things in line, is my position. Let's get things in line for that. Let's hire the people that we need to have, and let's look at everybody's salary because the money's going to be here for the next fiscal year, which starts October 1st. And this is a very good time to plan for all that because we can now look at it slowly, Because we do want, we do want to pay you guys, don't get it wrong, okay? But we've got to make sure that the numbers end up where they should so that we can afford the raises and certainly look at a comprehensive scale that says, X person here that works with streets has been here 20 years, so this is what he's supposed to do here. Okay? And we don't take anything away from anybody who's already there, we just bring people up to where they should be.
Exactly what the council says. You can't determine what a 20-year person makes until you know what an entry level employee makes. You can't.
But this is not address those people that make low-end salaries. If you have to give them a 90, 95% increase, that's...
That lines them up with every other city our size with the pay scales the most similar. How do you determine, how do you determine what a 20-year teacher makes at the school? I mean, it seems like the school example is what works. How do you determine what a 20-year teacher makes?
They have a pay scale.
And they started all at the same place, didn't they?
They start at the same place.
So nobody in the city of Pierceville's ever started at the same place? And we're trying to go back to what should have done?
Their own experience they start, that's where they start. Now, they come in from the district with 20 years' experience, well, that's where they start.
Right. But that's not what's happened here, that's the point. That's never been what's happened here. What this is trying to do is establish that, at 80%, not at full what everybody else gets, at 80% of what they got in 2016.
And I understand that, I understand that, but, you know, how, this looks great for October, but right now, how do we justify passing anything like this? We don't know how our numbers are going to end up yet. When this was not budgeted for in this fiscal year, this was never part of the conversations during our last budget hearings. We have to include this in our next budget hearings. And I'm all for it. I'm for bigger things than this, but we can afford it, we can afford it.
Well, and I'll go back to that again. It wasn't budgeted for this year, and the reason I proposed this for July was because what was budgeted for this year was $60,000 in professional services for people to do studies just like this, and we haven't spent that because all the studies that need to be done, I've done, on top of everything else. And so that money's been saved, again, this year, every year since I've been here, that money's been saved. And so that was where the money came from for this, instead of paying somebody to come in here and tell us what I already know, and so let's use that money and give it to the employees instead. That was the whole purpose of proposing for July 1st.
Do you have a figure for July, August, September at 80% increase?
It was $37,000 out of the general fund, $7,000 out of the utility fund, and $500 out of...
Total?
That'd be 44.
Forty-four?
Well, but you can't look at it as 44 because it's different plus.
I know, but just a ballpark. Yes, I'm sorry.
Guys, I appreciate it, and I think...
Yeah, I, I appreciate the dialogue, and, and I think it's important that we have this, and, uh, I don't, I don't think we can start talking early enough or often enough without a budget. And we all, we all agree on something to the council, which is, which is good, and that value, um, so, so, so it is, and it, I appreciate people's passion in, in these things, um, and so, it, to, to that end, um, as, as we prepare for our budget preparation and move forward, this is a great place to start. And I want to remind everybody too, and I, and I understand, Julian, to your point, um, you know, we do have a one-point-four deficit at this round, but when we approve this budget, it will, it will, it will balance, we, we will get to that point. There's a lot of these out there, and we know some definitely on the ballot that, that we presume are going to happen. And so, prudence probably is, we should wait and see what that looks like until we finalize. I understand Teague's point, I understand that it's there, if you looked at, the thing, the thing too, Robert, and, and I do appreciate where you're coming, where you want to go with that conference plan, and, and to a certain degree, so, I don't, I haven't done the research, I don't, I don't know what it would cost, I assume fifty thousand is a valid figure, but that particular figure could be used for, say, to get us to a seventy percent, I mean, we could, we could use that money, and, and so, here's a thought, perhaps, now this isn't the right time to, to get that, just because there's so much concern from the budget, from the council position, but if there are concerns, we certainly have time to vet those and, and verify the numbers that Teague's have come up with or you're comfortable. And then Julian, your point, which again is valid, and the teams, to meet, to meet in the middle, we need to establish that baseline, you know, and, and, and that's right, and, and I see this as an attempt, but I either see the concern because there's things we don't know, and, and we're looking at the balance of it as negative one-point-four million, but again, we know by the time we, we pull the trigger, it's going, it's going to balance, we, we will do that. And, and we think that we're going to be able to possibly hire some new employees to accomplish things that we need to accomplish, um, and then provide, um, some kind of increase in compensation. And then, and then two, just something else to throw that out, those guys, I, I do see this, and I hear those comments that, you know, the manager's going to make more, supervisor's going to make more than, than employee, employees, the, the laborist guy out there, sweat, digging a ditch, so on and so forth. We, we can do something, you know, and, and I'm, I'm just throwing this out, but, you know, upper-level guys, maybe we can go at seventy percent, lower-level guys, we can go at eighty percent, you know, or, or something, I mean, we, we could meet in the middle of this and accomplish the objective. I, you know, I speak for myself, but I concur, I, I, I see this, I see the deficiency that it creates among our employees and the difficulty it makes for the division heads to keep their employees, so I see there's a need, and, and I trust that there's a need, and I believe on this management, that we can, that we can meet that need. Again, timing, I agree, maybe we need to hone this and get comfortable where, where we really feel that we can go with this, but, but I do want stress and stay, that, that I do appreciate this dialogue, and, and I do appreciate the talk and chance for everybody to voice their opinion about the budget, because Ruby so eloquently equated, it, it's important, and it is hard decision, and it is important, um, that we, that we get it as close to right or what we feel is right as possible, knowing that a budget is just a projection, you know, it is, it's just a projection of what we think based, based on awful lot of variables. So, so, and I'm just thinking, 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 guys, and it's good, dialogue is good, and I appreciate that.
Okay, so, yes, we have-
What is the turnout rate for city employees?
Uh, we haven't counted, I mean, I'm just going to watch what's happening, you know, some of our problems are happening, maybe, uh, what I see that's about to be happening with our directors, uh, yeah, it's, it's a lot worse than what everybody else is feeling.
We have three minutes left, um, before we have to go to the next meeting. Um, I think what basically all of these guys are wanting is the lower-level guys get more percentages than the supervisors. So, it's a way you can revamp this, um, percentages where we take care of our street guys versus the supervisors, is what I think is the consensus of everyone, and then we can bring it back to the table. I know it's hard to, because if you're basing on percentage for everyone, um, at eighty percent, everyone, but the person that's going to get the most income would be your supervisors, so, and that's what, that's, that's not lying with the rest of the council, so, if somehow we can revamp that, um, I think they will probably make a decision, favorable decision, um, and being that we do have some stuff left over, it may can happen by July, so, so-
Oh, July, only three days left of July.
Well, the first meeting, you know? Yeah, hurry up, we got-
Is it, I mean, is there a way that we could, to make it retroactive? That we could look at it and go, at, at, at the end of the day, I mean, money's important, don't, don't take this in the wrong thing, but we're not talking about a whole lot more.
That's forty thousand dollars, forty-four thousand dollars.
Yeah. I don't think there's anything to propose for making a raise or a factor for government employment, uh, not anything that I know of.
We don't have to go retroactive, we just-
Well, it's a, it's a thought, it's a thought, so we can look at it, we can vet all these things, and then possibly go, go back to July first, I mean, it, it just, you're just throwing it out there. My point is, is, is really, if we can get more heel workers, and people who are out there helping fix the streets, uphold the lines, everything, and bringing the guys that are currently with us and anybody else up, I mean, I'm looking at this, I'm looking at this, you know, I don't, I don't have a problem bringing them up to a hundred percent, giving them a, a six, seven thousand dollar raise a year, it, they do hard work. I don't have a problem with any of that, but let's, let's look at the other things that we do need as well, I think they need help out there. We used to have a crew of sixteen, eighteen out there in the field, I think they're down to about eight or so, I'm not sure. Uh, police station, I, I think at one time we had, what, nineteen, they're down to, what, fifteen, sixteen that year?
Fifteen.
I think you need that extra person to do compliance or something like that still, because we didn't, that grant didn't come through. Those things, we got to look at that, and, and, and then, as the money becomes available for next year, which it's looking good, you know, we can make this all happen. It's not that we don't want to make it happen, it's just we, I think we need to look at all the variables here and make sure that everybody gets what they deserve.
Okay, so, um, should we table this for the next meeting?
Okay. Motion to table.
There's a motion to table?
Okay.
All in favor? Motion to adjourn. Okay, good evening, welcome to the special meeting of City of Piersol, we held Thursday, June twenty-eighth, uh, the time is seven o'clock. Roll call, uh, the consensus, everyone is here, uh, call to order, there is a quorum, we will move on to item four, public hearing, need to entertain a motion to open the public hearing, please.
The move.
May I have a second?
Certainly.
All in favor? Motion carries.
So, here's the vote.
Yes.
We have nobody present again, uh, if there's any questions, if you have, if you have to answer questions, if not, it's, it's not surprising that we don't have anybody present in these areas, one, one personal property, the rest of our businesses, we had no businesses show up the first time, you know, for the annexation, we had a number of businesses in the personal, um, we have, well, two residential people show up, one of them, the wrong one, um, she's actually missed, her husband showed up, so, it's not surprising that we haven't had anybody show up. Second service plan, U C map, four hundred ninety-nine point nine-three-seven.
Yes, sir.
Did any of the business owners contact you about any of this?
No, I might have had any contact with anybody on this. Only business owner we've really been in contact across both of them was Mr. W.
Mr. Who?
Mr. W. the firework staff.
Oh, W.
He was the one where we heard anything from.
Yes, I have a question.
Um, my con, my concern with the, with, with the annexation right now is that there's a lot of work in the city that needs to be done, are, are you ready for the, the people that are going to come in now as citizens, that, to pay the city taxes for the headaches that are going to be coming in that they need and all this stuff? I mean, and we don't have the manpower to get the work done, you know?
So, that's a good question, and the reality of that question is it has to be, because the only way we really have to expand that tax revenue base is to make the city work. And we've done it with these, the, the, the one that's been completed, the annexation phase one and this proposed phase two, we've done it, we've taken in the, the smallest amount of roads we can take in, uh, where we already had city services, because a lot of our city services are already extended outside of the boundaries anyways, so we have water, we have gas, uh, because there's no, we could include Steck, we already have those facilities out there. We don't, we don't have to take power plant from where the city limit ends all the way to Steck to get it, because we came across them. So, we took in two small, you know, two smallest roads we could take in, uh, and limited infrastructure as much as we could, uh, to get the maximum benefit from the annexation.
I mean, we're going, I mean, we're going to, we already hear it, you know, to this day, you know, that Dr. Over here, you know, approving the annexation, when there's work in the city that needs to be completed, and I agree with that, you know, I, I'm, I don't have a problem with, I wouldn't have the problem with the annexation if the work would be done in the city that needs to be done, because we still have a lot of, uh, uh, construction going on that hasn't been completed. There's construction that's been completed, but then you have to go back and redo it again, I mean, it's, it's, it's seen, I mean-
And one of the things we talked about extensively during the, the first annexation series of workshops, when we look at what we did in phase one, where we went from the current city limit on over and went out, um, those businesses, those people that live out there, they were responsible for having to create the bottles in town that are here now, they come to our, our roads, they use our, our facilities, they use our library, and they weren't paying for that. You had ten thousand people in town basically paying for, for what twenty thousand people were using it, so it's about sharing the cost of those people as well. So, it is, so it's about, kind of, kind of about sharing the cost as much as it is, because they're already using our service, that does provide a little bit more area, so I guess that's correct, um, but they're using all this in here too.
Could you raise your hand?
Yes. The, the positive thing about all this is that we are getting the tax-
Taxes right now, I'm sure.
And that's going to help to get things done in the city.
I agree.
Because we, we, we do not have the money to finish every street everywhere, but that's going to help some as well.
Galen, listen.
Um, we've, we've joined, just talked about, we've got more to pay for that little road, that little, that little structure we're taking, the tax, in fact, we don't have to pay for what we already have, the tax, so, it's, from a budgetary standpoint, it makes more sense.
You guys just waited my, I've got nothing else, but can you do this more? It, it is, uh, exciting, but, but, the W. Hill office, it's not his question, uh, and two, I, I know that it's out there, and, and I know you guys, that sweat out there and work so hard, um, you know, I feel that there's other manpower coming in this, you know, to your point, to your point, this is going to enable us. And, and, and looking at that, it was, uh, it is too, you know, studying the area, it is more, I mean, I know our resource is going to probably be the one that's going to be stretched a little further than, than the manpower on streets, because there is, I mean, state highways and there's other things, but, but anyway, it is, uh, what we stand to gain versus our expense. I think we're, as, as this unfolds, we're going to see if it's vastly superior what we gain versus what, I don't want to say what we lose, but what we cost as well. I'm ready to talk budget again, just quick, please.
Yes, sir.
And we're very careful in both of us to live, to, to, to do everything we can do to live at residential, because that's where the majority of the work comes from. Um, you're talking about law enforcement, most of that's businesses, um, you don't get as many business calls, you know, you don't, you don't have the domestic violence issues on Friday night, the businesses there in the homes, um, you don't have the, the drugs being sold out of businesses, being sold out of homes, so, it, it does, it expands the area, there's more we have to control, there's more we have to work. The, the other positive thing about this is that, that stuff that's outside of town, most of the time, that's our newest, that's our newer infrastructure too, because we got to add it in later, so it's not stuff that has repair issues and stuff like that, it's stuff that's in good shape, and so that helps us from that standpoint, because it's actually stuff that's already, already, already been in better shape than what we have now. And they really, they're not paying their share of the maintenance, because they're outside, they've got a higher rate, but they're not paying their share of the maintenance for property now.
Comments from you guys? Questions?
This, this will be on the agenda of the next, the approval will be, approval or disapproval of this annexation will be on the agenda for regular meeting in July.
Okay, if there's no further questions, we need to entertain a motion to close public hearing?
The move.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
And item, motion carries unanimously, and item five, the motion to adjourn?
The move.
Y'all come back now, please.